Number second, 2021, the time is 2:00 PM. Officially calling this meeting to order. This is our weekly business meeting. Attending Commissioners Duncan Brooks and Filios. And I'm going to ask Allison, want to lead us in the pledge, please?
Of course.
I pledge allegiance.
Oh, wrong one. Oh, I don't know. I want this one. I'm a law school kid.
Wait a minute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, a righteous land, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let no one say I'm a creature of happiness. Goodness.
Let's look to our back. I mean, can you see that?
Okay.
All right.
Can we approve the consent calendar, please?
Yes, I move that we approve the consent calendar as listed on our business meeting agenda for November second, 2021.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Filios.
Aye, motion is carried. Payables list?
I move that we approve the payables for the week of October 25th through the 29th, 2021, in the amount of $333,682.56 and no jury panel payments.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Filios.
Aye, and the motion is carried. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes. There's two of them. I know one of, oh, number nine, 10, and number 11.
Okay, so we're striking items 10 and 11?
Yes.
Okay, do we need a motion for that? No need, okay, thank you. All right then, so moving on to our first action item. Public hearing, resolution 2021-108, proposed vehicle license administration fee increased by the assessor. Allison?
Thank you. Allison, now for the record, we are asking for an increase in the administration fee for the vehicle licensing department. This is a fee that is applied to registration of vehicles and in part is used to help us cover the costs associated with facilitating this service. Cooney County has never increased this fee because of this, the assessor's office, we actually budget to kind of make up the difference. And so in that, we had asked that the auditor review these fees for us. The fee originally was set at $2.50 and from what we can tell, looks like maybe back in the eighties, and it has never been increased since. We are the lowest fee in all 44 counties. Similar sized counties, Ada County, their administration fee is $5.10. Canyon County is at $6, and the average for all of the counties came out to be $5.06. We asked the auditor to review our fees and analyze what this would be an appropriate fee. And in reviewing, they did actual expenses and our revenue for the DMV office, and they concluded that that conservative number to cover the expense per registration would be $5.09, which is in line with the state average, and so we're asking for an increase of $5.09.
Okay. Any questions for Allison? Since this is a public hearing, do we have any comments, for or against?
We received an email, so I don't know if we need to read that into the record, or what, what do you think, Dave? It's regarding this thing. Yep.
Yeah, I think if the board wants to have it written in the record, so.
Okay.
It's the only, only comment?
The only comment that I've seen.
Yeah, might as well. Go right ahead.
Okay, so Ms. Carolyn Fuller from Rathdrom, Idaho, I am writing about your vote on the increase for vehicle licensing that you will be discussing at Tuesday's meeting. I appreciate the attempt to capture some revenue from so many people moving into the area with these fees. I do feel confused that with so many people moving in, we don't already have enough money for administration. With any increase, I would like to see potential for expanding the DMV to meet the greater demand that it has now. It would be so helpful to have another office to go to or a larger one, so people didn't have to make appointments for days or weeks from when they needed it. I'm not sure why we have this problem as it is. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay. Any additional comments? Hearing none, I guess we need a motion to end public testimony and enter into deliberations.
Yes, so moved.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Filios.
Aye, any discussion?
I think it's about time.
Long overdue.
So, yeah, and I appreciate the auditor's contribution to the.
We're very hard and we appreciate it very much.
Bill, you're okay?
Yes, it's long overdue.
Okay, that makes three. Motion, please.
I move that we approve resolution 2021-108, which is the increase in vehicle license administration fee to the amount of $5.09.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Chairman Filios.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Filios.
Aye, and the motion is carried. Resolution 2021-108 is passed. Thank you, ladies. Item number two, bid opening 2021-06 for transfer trailers for solid waste.
If you want me to open, or you want to talk about?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, John Phillips for the record. So if we could open any bids that you've received, what I would need from you is the prices read aloud, and then as well as the recommendation to turn those over to the solid waste department and legal for review.
And we received one.
If the bid is in order, the top of page one of the bid's the middle form of all the prices.
Wilkins Industries, Inc. And it is not the top page, but they do have a 5% cashier's check. Okay, here we go. All right, purchase price, $131,313, and it says times two.
Okay, hang on, is that for the 48-foot?
That is, yes, that's the 48-foot.
Okay, can you repeat the price?
Sure, $131,313. And then for the 40-foot transfer trailers, $111,650, and that's also times two.
Okay. Okay, perfect.
Okay, sent off.
Been the recommendation to go to, or in the motion, I guess.
Yep, to acknowledge receipt, mhm.
All right, I move that we acknowledge the receipt of the bid and to be handed off to legal and solid waste for contemplation.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Filios.
Aye, motions carried. Thank you. Item number three, thanks JP, amended 2021 L1 levy rate, state tax commissioner, excuse me, state tax commission auditor. Is this Hutter?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, this is an amended, excuse me, L1. With the addition of the city of Hutter, there were some adjustments due to the URDs and the revenue allocation for different areas, so this is it, this is the final rates.
Okay.
And was our rate changed?
No.
So no rate change, okay. Bill, you want to take this?
Yes, I move that we approve the amended 2021 levy rate, L1 levy rate with the state tax commission.
Second.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Chairman Filios.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Apologize.
That's okay.
I don't know why I'm shifting them around today.
It's all right. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four, agreement for medical examiner services with Spokane County coroner, Dr. Keen.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, thank you for having us here. Warren Keen for the record from the coroner's office. As you know, we are on a one-year annual renewal of the agreement with Spokane Medical Examiner's Office. This has been through a JMELA and has been approved. The only change from last year is we inserted evaluations to make sure the communication was appropriate between the offices, and that has been exceptionally well received, and there have been no problems at all. And so that section was removed, but then the agreement is the same as it was last year, and it's renewed for another year. And at that point in time, it'll go on to a two-year renewal, so that we're in agreement with all the other counties on a every other year basis.
Questions for Dr. Keen?
I just want to be clear, the only thing that was changed was the date, or because yours, I got confused about, you added it, took it away?
Right, last year we added.
Correct.
Two periods of communications evaluations, one in May and one in October.
Okay.
Those points were removed.
Perfect.
And then now it's renewed for one more year.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I understood that.
And then it goes to a two-year renewal period?
Yes.
Okay. All right, motion, please.
I move that we approve the agreement for medical examiner services with Spokane County.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Filios.
Aye, and motions carried. Thank you, Dr. Keen. Item number five, work order 21-09 for air traffic control tower planning with TO engineers at our airport, Stephen.
Commissioner Stephen Kira for the record, this is a planning study, starting process to start the process into getting a tower at the airport. This is to get the data that we need that the FAA has requested as part of the application process, as well as to get our congressional delegation started, spooled up, so that we can get them on board with, realistically, the county not paying to build the tower. Because if you follow through normal FAA processes, this is a, their process is, is that the sponsor of the airport has to fund the construction. So it's, that's why we're seeing this process and this go about, is so that we can be better prepared down the road and be more active in this. This is an amount of $26,700, we'll absorb it into our budget, and most likely we'll use the money that we're receiving and the grant that we just got last week that will move into our budget anyways from the FAA, so we'll pay for this.
How much was that grant?
$59,000, if I remember correctly.
Okay, so then what happens when the study's concluded?
That's the conversation point with the FAA of how do, there, we want to get this going, we want to use your funding that you're going to have in place. That's the big unknown, there's not that many towers that are built right now that are not already being replaced. Are there maybe technology that finally catches up in the next four to five years? Because you're realistically talking a 10-year build cycle for this. Camera technology may finally catch up, or the FAA isn't going to accept a remote tower. There's only about four or five in the country, and they're not, the FAA is not convinced they're acceptable.
Can you, are they all executive or GA airports? Those four or five?
For the most part, they are. They're mostly GA airports.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we need to know more. I mean, what's their traffic like? I mean, how compatible are they, or comparable are they with us, and so?
Yeah, and there's, the Haley Airport Director sits on actually the national group for.
The virtual towers.
Virtual towers. He and I talk pretty regularly, and we are both in agreement that the FAA isn't to the point where they're going to accept them.
Sure.
So it's going to be one of those, in five years, they may.
Right.
Because if your technology continues to improve, so.
How long will the study take?
We're, when we're talking about this, it's probably less than six months.
Okay. And some of the criteria they'll be looking at, obviously traffic?
We're going to be looking at traffic, the types of traffic, the level of increases that we've seen. It's just that, the growth that we've seen over the last couple of years as well, you look at our fuel numbers, we've just exponentially grown. So it's being prepared and being able to defend ourselves when the FAA start asking, asks the question. And being ready for it.
Okay. Are we okay? Is there a motion?
I move that we approve work order 2109, air traffic control tower planning with TO engineering in the air.
I'm second.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Filios.
Aye, and the motion is carried. Thank you, Stephen. Item number six, termination, excuse me, of sublease for Gerstein Masek Consulting LLC at the airport.
So Commissioners, items six, seven, and eight are all actually the same building.
Okay.
What it is, is it is a termination of a sublease, a termination of a lease agreement dating back from 1988, and then a creation of a new lease following the, what we've talked about previously, what we're doing with PAC, which is the 25 cents for five years, and then moving to 30 cents, and then going to market rate after 10 years. So for this initial term, it's about approximately a one-acre site will be $10,968.75. This is solving a lease agreement that we had significant issues with due to the fact that it was violating our grant assurances due to being a 100-year term lease. There was not truly a way to bring it to market. There's a lot of problems with this lease agreement, and this solves a lot of the problems.
And obviously, they're in agreement.
They're in agreement with it. They were, once they started doing title on it, they were, their first response was, how do we get rid of this lease? And the title report came back, and it was 15 pages.
Wow.
Okay. So counsel, can we group six, seven, and eight? Okay, great.
Thanks.
Here we go.
All right, I move that we approve the termination of the sublease, Gerstein and Masek.
Masek.
Masek Consulting LLC, and the termination of the memorandum and assignment of lease, and termination of leasees' interest with US Products, Inc. and Gerstein, and that we approve the ground lease, AAL 2021-1900 CH Office LLC.
Great job. I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Filios.
Aye, and motions carried. Thank you. Moving on to item nine, consent to assignment of lease, AAL-20200-997 Blue Water Estate Services North LLC to DWH JR Holdings LLC at the airport, Stephen.
Stephen Kira, good for the record, this is a, an assignment to the same individual who's really changing company names.
Okay.
So that's all we're doing is, they're moving the company to a company. So no change is involved with it, it's just the name changes.
Name change. Okay, Bill?
Sure.
I, with, that we approve the consent agreement of lease, AAL 2200-997/Blue Water Estate Services North LLC and DW.
2D, yeah. 2DWH, yeah. It's a name change.
Yeah. DWHJR Holdings LLC at the airport.
Second.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Filios.
Aye, motions carried. 10 and 11 are stricken. 12, resolution 2021-107, surplus vehicle for community development.
Is anybody on the line? Anybody on the line from community development? All right, we can just handle it.
Yeah, we can handle it. Go right ahead.
All right, so this is a request to send to auction, a GMC Envoy, and let me get to the resolution here. It is being given up due to its age, repair, safety concerns, and no for lease to the county. So I recommend that we approve that.
Quick move, yeah. I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Filios.
Aye, and the motion is carried to surplus the vehicle by resolution 2021-107. Item 13, fiscal year '22 salary update, employee list and revisions report, effective October 10th of 2021, human resources, our HR Director Sylvia Proud.
Sylvia Proud for the record, what you have before you is a change to one employee's salary in order to put them on the matrix that was adopted October 10th. So in speaking with Jill Smith from the Treasurers Office, we, she did a check with the budget office, and the position was filled by an individual who had been here for many years. So it was budgeted at a higher level than what it'll cost us and the impact of the budget to place this individual on a specific step. So I'm asking for the board's approval to be able to place that employee on a step and that it be retro to October 10th, 2021.
Okay. Any questions for Sylvia?
Nope.
Motion.
I move that we approve FY salary, FY '22 salary update, employee list and revisions report, effective 10/10/21.
Second. Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Filios.
Aye, motions carried. Item 14, fiscal year '22 salary update, employ, whoop, 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 sorry about that, we just did that. Number 14, exception to hiring policy number 120, KCPA employee at 100% of market, HR, Sylvia.
Actually, it's Kim.
Oh, Kim.
Kim Van Lee.
Sorry, I didn't see it.
It's okay.
You look so much alike.
All the fun. So we had a prosecutor's employee hired yesterday in a secretary position, and it's not unusual for departments to reach out and ask for where they could be qualifying on the matrix, the general pay plan. And Mr. McHugh had done that and reached out. I had a typo and put step six instead of step five. He shared that information with his admin staff, and they processed him. When I got the, the offer of employment that the potential employee signed, he had accepted that rate of pay. So I raised my hand and said, that's me. So I'm bringing it before you to see if we can make an exception to policy 120 to bring him in at step six, 100% of market. His experience does qualify him to have over six years of experience in that position. It's a difference of 48 cents an hour, $998 a year plus load, if, to make this exception to policy for him.
Seriously?
Seriously.
Okay, sorry, I'm just used to thousands and not hundreds. So my, my only question is compression. Was compression looked at?
It's not an issue.
Okay.
No, actually, he'll be, there'll still be a savings of 35 cents per hour compared to the person that was in the position previously. But because it's an exception to policy, bringing it before you.
Okay.
To get your stamp.
Got it. Okay. Motion.
I move that we approve the exception to hiring policy 120 for the prosecutor employee at 100% of market.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Filios.
Aye, motions carried. Item number 15, early termination of lease, Commercial Property Management LLC, public defender, Anne. How are you?
Good. I have three things today. This one is for you guys to sign, so that we can get some money back. We will be completely out of 1607 Lincoln by the 15th of this month.
Okay. Any questions? Motion.
I move that we approve the early termination of the lease for the commercial property that LLC that the public defender's occupying.
Second. Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Filios.
Aye, motions carried. Thank you, Anne. Order ID/ Q-01781923 with Thompson Reuters, Westlaw Extension Form, public defender. Go ahead, Anne.
On this one, our contract with Westlaw was set to terminate in October, and they of course have changed and increased their pricing. What we did was we reduced the number of users so that we wouldn't increase the money need for this year to give us a chance to get it into our budget year next year, to consider the increase for whatever packaging we're doing. So a signature on this one does not make our budget raise, it just means we get to keep Westlaw for fewer users for the remainder of this year.
How much did they raise?
Gosh, the, I, I think it was about $1,000 a month, somewhere around there. And I wasn't prepared to negotiate packages with them yet. I wanted to just keep the status quo to get us to March when we start our process, but through October of this year.
Okay.
Okay, motion.
I move that we approve order IDQ-01781923 with Thompson Reuters for the Westlaw extension.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Filios.
Aye, and the motion's carried. Item 17, fiscal year '22, public defense commission grant funding, once again, Anne, our public defender.
This one's a little bit more complicated. When we received our award this year, we talked about how the funding wasn't going to match the need for the positions. When we applied for the grant, we applied for additional money. We asked for the same kind of increases for the positions that we did in our budgeting process with the county. And the timing's a little bit different between both the grant and the county's budget. The grant, then, this is just the workload grant. The workload grant that we received did not account for any pay raises. Further, they did not fund one of the attorney positions that previously had been funded. So we have a number of positions that one needs to be either terminated or frozen in case they bring it back next year. But we have several other positions that we, that will be short in our workload grant unless the county wants to supplement that and fund the rest of those positions or freeze those positions and not hire them because of the lack of funding.
So I think that it's still the case where if they underfund us, then we do not need to fund those additional attorneys. Is that correct?
I believe that's still the way the, the rules and the statutes read, that they can require us to comply with workload as long as they fund it.
Fund it.
It is not fully funded.
Okay, so then my question to you is, where are you at with your, hiring's the wrong word, but open positions? So can we continue to put this off every month until we find out that, okay, now I do have those positions, I'm ready to hire for them, but yet they're not funded? I mean, do we have?
We're not there yet.
Okay.
I, I understand you to be saying, am I hiring only for these positions that are not fully funded?
Right.
And that's not the case right now.
Okay.
I can keep tabs on this and leave them and bring it back.
Right.
When we get closer to being ready to need to fill those positions.
Now, would you recommend we freeze the one position, and then?
I, I think that we should treat them all the same.
Okay.
I, once we fill either the other grant-funded position or the county-funded positions, then I can come back and freeze that so that we don't continue to advertise for them. But I think we should treat them all the same.
Okay.
Anne, when, the total grant received, you know, 1.385-plus million, the deficit that's indicated, the 647,000, is that, when you say deficit, that's how much less than we got than what was requested?
Not than what was requested, than what we'd need to fully pay for those positions, to pay the costs and benefits and to pay the higher wage.
Okay.
That this county's been trying to address the wage issues with the employees, and we were able to get our attorneys a little bit more money, but this grant did not match that. We did ask.
And it is lower than last year's, isn't it?
It, it may be.
A little bit.
As far as what we actually received, they're looking at what we're projected to have left, and then trying to make it whole to a certain amount. But it would be less because they cut. But it would be less because they cut one attorney position. If you'll recall, when we started, we had a half-time attorney position, and then last year, that position went full-time, workload grant-funded, and now that position doesn't exist this year. So I, I don't know what will happen next year, but certainly, we won't try to do anything for that.
Okay. So what's our motion here?
I think it's just informational.
It's an FYI. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Anne. Item 18, Advisory Board Appointments, Snowmobile Advisory Board, Parties of West, Dawson, Waller, and Ellis, and that is for us to do.
Yes. So, we chose not to interview this time because we had one reappointment, three openings, three candidates who came highly recommended by both the Snowgroomer Department and KCSO. So these are the different people, and then I have their terms as well. So if you guys are okay with that, and they do serve at the pleasure of the Board of County Commissioners, and they are aware of that.
Okay. Questions? Motion?
If you're all right, I'll take this one.
Yeah, yeah, go right ahead.
Okay. So I move that we approve the following Advisory Board Appointments for the Snowmobile Advisory Board. The reappointment of Joe Wiest, term ending December 31st, 2024. The appointment of John Dawson, term ending 12/31 of '24. The appointment of Rodney Waller, term ending 12/31 of '22. And Paul Ellis, term ending 12/31 of '22.
Second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Philios.
Aye, and motion is carried. Thank you. That concludes our action items, so we move on to the status update. And the first item is facilities expansion.
Sure. All right. Well, this is kind of exciting. I think that if we can agree as a board on a couple of different items, we're ready to start the request for qualifications for the general contractors. Okay, CMGC.
Okay.
Yeah. Construction Manager General Contractor.
There you go.
Okay. So the, the first, I think we're all in agreement that, well, we might not be. So I'll ask the first question. Are we going to build something for court services?
I vote no. I vote yes.
Okay, and then I vote yes. So then the second part is, where is this going to be? In between the Justice Center and the courthouse, or attached to the west side of the Justice Center?
Do we have to decide that, like, now?
Well, only if we want to go forward. We don't have to decide it now at all. But it was recommended by the architects to move over instead of having a separate standalone building to be connected with the Justice Center.
Oh, 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 okay.
Yeah, so it, it serves two purposes. Number one, it's just a better location. Number two, justice service needs an elevator. So they'd be able to put the elevator between the addition and the building, and then that way it will.
It seems more practical to, to just proceed as an addition.
Yes, I agree.
I won't vote because I voted no.
By the way, why did you vote no?
You got a half an hour?
No. Can you condense it to three minutes?
No.
Okay. Anyway.
Okay, so then the third thing would be funding. So, do we want to intend to use ARPA funding? Do we want to intend to go out for bond? What is the intent? And we don't, there's no...
It's not binding?
It's not binding at this point, it's just discussion.
I would say if the ARPA funding is available, let's use the ARPA funding.
Okay.
From all, well, I shouldn't say that, I guess it's premature at this point, but I think we might be headed in a direction.
No, for all indications, I think that it is going to be an allowable charge.
And I, and I think we have many, many needs around the county for the ARPA money.
Oh. Oh, your mic's off.
I said we should, we have many, many needs in the county for the ARPA money. Many departments really do need it. And I think we should go out for bond on this and ask people, and take the responsibility of educating the public as to why we need it.
Thoughts?
Is there another project that we could go out to bond for if we used ARPA money for this? Is there one that you have in mind?
That's a juxtaposition that I don't think we need to make at this point.
Okay. So I have the opinion to go ahead with the ARPA funding because the bond issue still can be used for future projects that have been requested. And I, I think that with the addition and the CMGC, we may be able to get it to a point where we don't need what the projection was that we gave to the ARPA, the ARPA people. So, with the location and the funding, are you ready to, for me to start the RFQ process with Corey Trapp?
I would say yes.
No.
Okay. I say yes, so we'll continue down that path. And it's going to be a slow process only because of the multiple projects throughout the county that have been tried to bid, and they've been all way overpriced. And so at this point, I think the slowness will benefit us.
Okay. What, as long as we're on this, and I don't want to veer off topic, what's the schedule for the final word on the ARPA funding? Is it December? Do we know?
They were saying maybe December, but there were over 1,000 questions submitted that are still being answered. And so really, it may be early next year before we get the final rule. But they have said that if you expend money, we haven't expended this yet. If you expend money based on the interim rule that fits with the interim.
Yeah, I'm so sorry, Jill, you need to come to a microphone.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I know.
Well, you can sit, you just...
They have said that if you expend funds based on what the interim rule says before the final rule is released, that they're not going to claw back that money.
Okay.
Oh.
We're not going to spend this that quickly, but.
Correct.
Because it's taken so long to get a final rule, they've, they've made that concession.
But I imagine we will actually spend some money with the architect, and so that money would probably, probably be able to still get that reimbursed if we couldn't go ahead with the project in the future, so. Okay, well, I...
Jill Smith, for the record.
Okay.
Of that direction, thank you.
So we're done with facilities expansion? Okay, so the three things is, we're ready to proceed with, for the Construction Manager General Contractor, funding to be ARPA, and that will lead to the RFP for the selection of the CMGC.
Yes. Well, I'll, I'll keep you updated each week. At this point, we're going to go to the architect first to make sure they don't need to do any more before we do the RFQ.
Understood.
Because it's quite, you know, going from a standalone to a, an addition is going to be different, so.
Okay. PAC Airport Lease. Stephen, you hung around for this.
We've got final updated legal from our surveyor, so it should actually go out either today or tomorrow. We just got it this morning, so.
So what's going out? Is our?
The actual lease agreement.
Two PAC?
Two PAC.
Okay.
We just got the updated legal today.
Okay. Thank you. Financial Snapshot, Deena requested, we postpone to next week because today is Election Day, and she's helping out. Okay. Impact Fee Analysis, Bill?
Galena Consulting, main personality is in Europe, and we'll be back next week. And we'll, we'll communicate then.
Okay. North Lot Land Sale?
I still have not received any counteroffer, but what I'm thinking with agreement is that I get a legal opinion, there is a, a time factor that I, I think is going to be relevant to their offer. And it just has to do with what's happened in the past and the different offers that have been going back and forth to the Board of Commissioners. And so I want to get a legal opinion on accepting different offers and, and what's happened in the past.
Got it. Okay. Skate and Gun Club?
The, so we actually talked with the appraisal company, there was, she was actually in the hospital, that's why it was a delay. Either way, we're continuing to run into some issues of talking with people that have been buying land around us. The problem is, is you're looking at probably 400 to 500 and five and a half, or 550,000 dollars for the whole 36.76 acres. Because we've actually had county legal, our county, our county surveyor do a legal description too, and it's 36.7 acres.
Okay.
And it's, it's an extremely large piece of property. And so because of that, I did a couple different oper, options of funding, or not funding, but lease rates. And basically, it's, one is, and this boils back down to if we have another funding source, whether or not we go, agree to this. And it basically start, one, it starts at the 25 cents and goes to the 30 cents after five years. The other one is, is it graduated over 10 years. The 25 cents is basically about $400,000 a year.
Which they can afford.
That they couldn't afford. Which then led me to the next option, which is, okay, we start at 120,000 a year and go up 30 to 40,000 dollars every year. Once you started breaking it down, though, and saying, okay, if they have, they claim they have 300, or 2,000 active members, but you figure there's probably 300 that are active and full-time, what does that look like per person, per year? What, 1,200, it's about $400 per year extra. Once you're at the maximum amount of about half a million, you're about $1,600 per year for 300 members.
Per person.
Per person. And that's, that's where you're starting to get expensive, but you're talking 36 acres.
Right.
So, I can email you the spreadsheet, and it's, it's not, it's not good, to be honest, it's expensive. But it's, it's 30, basically 37 acres of land.
But did you, you have not gotten the appraisal yet?
We've not gotten the appraisal.
Okay, but this is just your estimating.
Yeah.
Okay.
And a lot of it has to do with, it's, we're ignoring the, a lot of it's, you're ignoring the appraisal amount.
Right.
And we're just doing other options to get a price.
Right. So the 500,000, 550,000 for 36 acres, was that a purchase amount?
That was a purchase, no, that's, that's the rental amount.
That's the lease, yeah.
Rental amount, not a purchase amount?
Not a purchase amount.
Okay.
The number we're keep hearing is about 125 to 150,000 is what people are keep, continue saying per acre to purchase.
Okay, which is really weird because it's not even best use with, you know, housing.
That's what people are saying, though. But there, there's a, there's a lot of land that recently sold around us in excess of 100,000 for industrial, per acre. There's some land that's really close to us that is smaller lots, or smaller lot that was, right now is for sale for 200,000. Yeah, nobody thinks they'll go for that, but that's where the market's going.
Okay.
And this, there's a multiple people that have said this to us, so that's why we're.
Sure.
Saying, okay, if it's 20, 125,000 an acre, means your 12, 12,500 is your typical rent return. So what you want to see is 10%. It's a lot of money, it's about $400,000, which you're looking at, 450-ish.
Okay, so we're, but at this point, we're waiting on the appraisal?
We're waiting on the appraisal still, but I can share this with you, it's, either way, it's still, it's 36 acres.
Are they looking for an alternate site? Probably not.
Probably not.
Bill, can you follow up with Terrell, please? See, and that's a site potentially down in the Elder Road area. By the way, the land down there isn't cheap either, but that's a whole nother matter. Okay. Anything else on the Skate and Gun Club? No? Panhandle Village Water Project, I signed a letter of support last week, so I, I guess we can close this out?
I don't think so. I think, if memory serves me correctly, I put it on because Jody wanted the option to speak about it every week if needed.
Oh, okay.
That's my memory. If I find out different, then we can pull it. But, so if she's not.
Leave it open.
Yeah, so leave it open, and then if she decides she needs it, then it's there.
Fair enough. That's it. Public comment? Hearing none. 2:43, meeting adjourned. Thank you.